The Monday, September 8th, 2025, meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otteaway.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel.
Here.
Mayor Hanley.
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do I have a motion? Pro Tem Schlegel?
Make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Otteaway?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing, none. All in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. I have no announcements for tonight, which brings us to boards and committees. Commissioners, we have one appointment today. Do we have a motion on the appointment? Commissioner Otteaway?
I move to appoint Abigail La Forest to the Public Art Commission for an unexpired term ending 2/26/28.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just thank you.
All right. Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. And we now have one reappointment in front of us. Do I have a motion on the reappointment? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we reappoint. Sorry. I move that we reappoint Amy Moss to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending 9/1/2028.
A second? Pro Tem Schlegel?
Second motion.
Any discussion?
No, other than a thank you to Amy for serving.
All right. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first public comment portion of this meeting. When speaking, please state your name and physical address. Do I have anyone for public comment this evening?
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. Tonight on the agenda, you're going to talk about Cliff's Dull remediation of the property. I'm sure there's people in this town who know more about the nut and bolt of those plans than I do. I literally did not have the time to read 487 pages. I have, however, in the past seven years, done multiple presentations on the history of Cliff's Dull and the efforts that have been made to remediate the property in the past, all of which have failed. I have no wisdom to share with you about what to do in terms of you've got a grant, you're going to spend it, you've picked a vendor to work with, they seem to have experience doing this. I have nothing to add or subtract from that, except there is one unalterable fact about Cliff's Dull. It has poured poison into the environment from before the time Cliff's Dull started, when the ceramics, ceramics. The kilns were there to make charcoal and the wooden chemicals that were made of Cliff's Dull to the time that it ended in '69, but the leaching of chemicals from the property has never ended. It has never been verified by the state that you've ever been underneath the limits for those chemicals. There's never been one positive statement where you could say it's remediated itself. So unlike so many environmental damages where eventually it heals on its own, it is inarguably not healed on its own. If you talk to any of the people who go under the water, you can smell Cliff's Dull under the water, and that simply has to do with the way they discharge chemicals, and in fact, the water pipe that they took the chemicals in is still there. So you are not dealing with something that is getting better on its own. It is getting, it's been bad and it continues to get bad. And I'm going to repeat something I said before because I want to make sure it's part of the record. You're going to do what you're going to do tonight, and as I said, I just don't have any comment to advise you, but I do advise one thing. This town is full of spiritual advisors. Every race, creed, and color has brought its faith to this area, from Native Americans to every immigrant group that has come here, to New Age, to people who pray with music. I am begging you that before you let anybody do anything to that site, you hold a healing ceremony for that land, because it has done nothing but poison for generations. And if you're going to do this now with chemistry, I have faith in chemistry, I really do, but Cliff's Dull has destroyed for the last hundred years. So that's the only advice I can give you is bring into the faith people who can address this issue better than science ever has, and do that before you pump more chemicals into the ground. And I wish you the best of luck on your decision.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. This brings us to our presentation of the evening, the Planning Commission. This will be done by Kevin Clegg. Thank you for being here, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Hanley, for having me, and thank you to the commission. My name is Kevin Clegg. Some of you have been on the Planning Commission before, so this is old hat, and others, this maybe is also remedial, we've had a few of these before. We're going to go over what the Planning Commission is responsible for. We are responsible for development and updates of the community master plan. We just adopted a new one last year after several years of hard work. Congrats to all involved. Recommending amendments to the Land Development Code. We typically spend our winters refining and looking through our Land Development Code for things that have come before us and refining and recommending new changes to that to y'all. Making recommendations on zoning issues to be considered by the legislative body, and rezoning and planned development, planned unit development requests. We just had one of those a couple of months ago and had a site plan review for that last week. Continued responsibilities. Administrative review of large developmental proposals on private property, not public, and approval of special land use requests. It ensures conformance with the Land Development Code, the Community Master Plan, and provides an opportunity for citizen oversight to the development review process. We are responsible for review of street reconstruction projects and other large public building improvement projects to, again, ensure alignment with the Community Master Plan and provide a public forum for these projects. Also, recommendations on the annual capital improvement plan. Bit of history, Planning Commission was established in 1947. Land and property development was largely uncoordinated until after the first city plan was adopted in 1950. The first zoning ordinance for the city of Marquette was adopted in 1925, celebrating 100 years. It was only seven pages long and not linked to any planning. Planning Commission current membership. So we have seven out of nine positions filled right now. We're seeking two new appointments, both of them resigned due to various term limits or other responsibilities. One member of the Planning Commission must serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Our current representative is Commissioner Dallas Fetter. It should be noted that at one meeting this spring, there was the first and only time there were five women serving on the Planning Commission at the same time, which is pretty cool. It has never happened for us, so we're excited about that. 2024 proceedings. Most of our business was in site plan review and then a few other projects. We have seen that our business has gone down a little bit, and that's actually indicative that our Land Development Code is working. We are heading things off administratively and less people are having to come before these administrative bodies, which is a success. So that is the type of thing we want to see. Concerns for next year and beyond. Housing, it can't be overstated, you all know this. The Planning Commission is helping to act on that by land development code amendments. We believe short-term rentals should be held to 250, or the number should be shrunk. We can do that with a couple of different avenues. Mobility and transit. Progress has stalled for years on bus route that was recommended by both the most recent and previous Community Master Plan, so we'd like to see some movement on that. Mobility, sidewalks, paths, and bike routes. We're eager to see and evaluate the draft micro mobility plan. Climate action planning. We have a guide for a planning effort in the Community Master Plan and are eager to act. Reminder for everyone here in attendance that zoning permits are required for most structures, many renovations, fences, or new construction. Call city staff at planning to verify before you start your build. It'll save you time and money. Recommendations for mobility. Completion of the bike routes plan needs funding, grants, funds, maybe forthcoming. Then action to complete street markings, bike lanes, and signs. Sidewalk walkability is important to us, and winter walkability is improving mainly due to climate change, so we need some added sidewalk clearing if possible, and enforcement of snow obstruction would help. When we talk about snow obstruction, so what we're meaning is enforcement of people plowing into the sidewalks, not so much people shoveling and/or not clearing their sidewalks, but when the plow trucks are coming through and making gigantic piles and purposely obstructing that walkability zone, we would like to see some movement on that if possible. Public transportation. Continuing effort to establish an intra-city transit route. Planning Commission would like an update on staff, Mark Tran, board efforts. Enhance community communication and coordination between the City Commission and Planning Commission on community planning issues. We have had a standing joint meeting in the fall. Our recommendation would be that after we review our agenda for the winter and things that we have on the agenda for reviewing for Community Master Plan updates, that we meet after that so we can discuss what our plans might be and what you are seeing here at the City Commission agenda or level. That's all I have for you right now. If there's any questions?
Commission, do we have questions? Pro Tem Schlegel?
Thanks, Kevin. Always great to get an update from the Planning Commission. Love the work that goes on down there and really appreciate the info today. I'm glad that you brought up, you know, the hard work that you and the staff and the Planning Commission have done with the LDC. Because of that, you know, there's a lot less, a lot less work for you guys to do because of all the refining that's been done over the years, and I just think that that's something that's been going on for quite some time and really needed to be, and I'm just glad to see that it's working. One question I would have would be, we're talking about the 250 cap on VRBOs. I would wonder if the Planning Commission has considered maybe a different stance on homestays and their use in the community. Homestays are basically where you rent out a room in your place. It's not as invasive per se as a VRBO, but it's really just, you know, a convenience rental. And I don't really need to have an answer for it tonight, but it's just one of those things where I would think that since it's still a homestead, that maybe it would be easy to kind of group that into a different area so that people could utilize extra space in their homes if they have that ability and could, you know, abide by the regulations that are set forth by homestays versus the VRBOs. So just something to bring up.
Sure, thank you. Hope we'll take that under consideration.
Anyone else, Commission?
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks for, I'm glad you were able to step up into the chair position and to help move the work with the Planning Commission. I know, I know, having less.
I know potentially having fewer plans come to the board, you know, sounds like less work, but I bet they have just as much work in, you know, with, you know, moving forward with review of the current land use development code and amending that and systematically going through it kind of line by line to make sure that our community is, you know, as livable as possible. So I certainly appreciate, you know, the work that you do and moving forward, and, you know, I would certainly echo Pro Tem Schlegel's, say, you know, thoughts, you know, thoughts as far as the homestays go, and I certainly would be willing to discuss that further in the future.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, well, thank you very much for being here tonight, Kevin.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
This brings us to our consent agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion on consent? Commissioner Otteaway?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, seeing no discussion, City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Yes.
Commissioner Larson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Otteaway.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel.
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley.
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to new business. The first item of new business that we have is to schedule a public hearing for our fiscal year 2026 budget. Commissioner, or City Clerk, can I have the background, please?
Mayor, really, the only background is a recommendation to schedule a public hearing for September 29th to review and adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget. The public hearing notice is attached in full, but it's a lot of numbers.
You sure you don't want to read it?
I will do whatever you like.
You're fine. Okay. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I move to.
Can you put your microphone on?
Thank you. I move to schedule a public hearing for September 29th, 2025, at 6:00 PM to review and adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Otteaway?
Second.
Commissioner Gottlieb, do you have any discussion? Okay. Commissioner Otteaway? Anyone else have any discussion? This is pretty much just a standard. Get it on, get it on the books so that we can go over it again. We've gone over a lot of this budget with staff multiple times before now, and so this is now getting it passed before our deadline because we like to follow the deadlines in this state. All right. So any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to new business, item number six, the contract removal for institute remediation services at a former Cliff's Dull site. City Clerk, can I have the background on that, please?
Absolutely. The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency awarded the city a $964,250 grant on September 11th, 2023, for evaluation and cleanup services at the Cliff's Dull site. The city hired Tri Media Environmental and Engineering Services, LLC through an RFP process to act on the city's behalf as a qualified environmental professional consultant. Tri Media assisted the city in putting together an RFP for a cleanup contractor to conduct institute remediation at the site. The RFP was advertised for bids on July 17th, 2025, with a bid opening on August 20th. Three cleanup contractors responded with proposals, and the results are summarized below. Regenesis BioRemediation, in the amount of $519,976, Orin Technologies, in the amount of $802,148, and Taplin Group, LLC, in the amount of $5,077,659.40. The proposals were reviewed by the city, Tri Media, and the city's environmental legal couns- council, Foley, Barron, Metzger, and Yipe, PLLC. The consensus among the group is to recommend awarding the cleanup contract to Orin Technologies based on their complete RFP response, which includes a bench study, remaining under budget, and providing the most value at the cost provided. Fiscal effect, none. The cost associated with this work is fully covered by an EPA cleanup grant. Recommendation, award the Cliff's Dull Brownfield Site Institute Remediation Services contract to Orin Technologies of Verona, Wisconsin, at a cost not to exceed $802,148, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we award this Cliff's Dull Brownfield Site Institute Remediation Service Contract to Orin Technologies of Verona, Wisconsin, at a cost not to exceed $802,148, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract.
A second? Commissioner Larson?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I was just, was thrilled to read all of those pages that were provided to us. I can't say that I understood it, but what was most helpful to me was the recommendation from Tri Media to go with this group, and I will trust that our engineers and our staff are choosing the correct company for this. It sounds like they have a lot of experience, and I'm really looking forward to having one more attempt to resolve some of the issues that we have at the Cliff's Dull property.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
No further comment on that.
Any other commissioners with comment? Pro Tem Schlegel? You turned on your mic, I didn't know.
Yeah. You know, I guess in response to some of the words that were said earlier about the site, I would highly doubt, and certainly not in my lifetime, that this site is never going to be 100% cleaned up. And I guess over the years, there's been just time after time after time where we go ahead, we try and make space in our city that was very highly industrial back in the industrial phase, that we have to go through, we have to make some real tough decisions with how our land was neglected over time. So my only point really in this is to say that I'm really proud that as a commission, we can sit here and say that we're doing steps to make the site the best that we can with the ways that we have at our fingertips in 2025, and I hope that further commissions down the line will continue with the same efforts in order to try and, you know, their best to bring back, whether it's the Cliff's Dull site or any other piece of Marquette property, the best possible way that they can responsibly and out of respect for Mother Earth and for the people that are coming after us, and even for the people that came before us, because, you know, we're not all perfect, and we're all, we all go a little rogue every once in a while, and I think that was a, there was a period in time where you could say they went a little rogue, but anyway, that's my take on it, and I appreciate the ability to say my piece.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Gottlieb?
As pointed out by Ms. Brum, this is a thorny issue and it's one that is not going to be easily solved even with this. The issue is far over my head, and I did read through, or attempted to read through the, I didn't even count the number of pages, but I did try to read through them. I have a fair amount of education behind me, and this is way over my head. I too am relying on Tri Media and the city staff. I feel we have to rely on the experts at the city and the consultants chosen and the legal advisors and the choice they made. I will support this, but we'll see what happens. This may not be the end of the road.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? With that, all in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our last public comment portion of the evening. As a reminder, you may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address when approaching the commission. Do I have anyone for public comment?
Margaret Brum, you know where I live. This is a busy time of year. We've got a lot of events coming up. I wanted to make the public aware that there is a candidate forum coming up for the open seats on the City of Marquette City Commission and my open seat on the Board of Light and Power on Thursday, October 2nd, in the City Commission chambers from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and I'm hoping we can fill the room with people because the League of Women Voters does a fantastic job of letting people know who the candidates are and giving them a chance to discuss the issues of the day. And I know that there will be more on this as we get closer to that date, but I wanted people to save that date on their calendars because even though it'll be, I'm sure it will be streaming and everything, the ones I've attended and the ones I've watched have always been of value, and coming forward, we're going to need more of that. Also, there's going to be more and more announcements on Facebook and other media. There's upcoming training on E-Rail, which is the emergency response to animals and accidents. There's a two-a-day class coming up in Escanaba. The first day is called Bolt Euthanasia Training. It's for first responders who may be first on the scene, who have to mercifully put down an animal injured in an accident. And the next day is six hours of E-Rail training, what to do when you come upon an emergency. And this is where it's being expanded now. Originally, the E-Rail trailer was in Forsyth Township, and they were responsible for it. Federal government found out what we were doing, and we had a lovely Zoom meeting and a nice person in DC. And the nice person in DC said, you know, you're doing such a good job in Marquette County. We want you to handle the whole Upper Peninsula. So this training will be all over Facebook, all over the media. We're trying to get people from every county to come to Escanaba, which is the closest training we can get. And I'm not going to bother people with the date and time, but it'll be on Facebook. And this is an opportunity, over the weekend, we had some Marquette people involved in a rescue up in the Kiwanah. Diver Don Fassbender was up there working on the boat for his crew. They found out somebody was in trouble with Canyon Falls, and they ended up going into the woods after that person. And Eagle Mine donated a vehicle to help them. So at any given time up here, you could be called upon to save a person, an animal, both. And you may be the only one who can help until the first responders get there. So you're going to be seeing more and more of that. And we encourage anybody with the faintest amount of interest, and, you know, from 16 years on up, to come to this training and see what it's like and see if they can participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Which brings us to comments from the commission. I will start tonight with Commissioner Larson.
I don't have any comments tonight.
Even better. Pro Tem Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll get on my soapbox once more about watching out for kids. Dunlop School's back in session. Northern's back in session. We've got a lot of different road areas that are being utilized with middle of town and College Avenue. It was mentioned earlier that if you were not here, that we were starting a traffic study in that neck of the woods to see how things are going to be worked out with the new development in that space. So I look forward to hearing about that in the coming months as that begins in September. And I think that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mayor?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Addaway?
No comment.
Commissioner Davis?
I will just mention that this Thursday is the anniversary of 9/11. And it was a very dramatic and solemn time and very scary time for our nation's history. I can't remember the exact time. It was something like 9:21 AM when the first plane hit. And it might be a good time for people to reflect on what our country was like prior to 9/11 and what it's like these days. Those of us who remember it can think about all of that. Those who are younger and don't remember it, it might be good to just talk to someone who does remember. And if you've never been to the 9/11 memorial in New York City, it certainly is worth the time because it is such a significant time in our nation's history.
Commissioner Gottlieb? Right. I also have nothing for the evening, so I will send it over to our city manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to put out a reminder that there is community office hours on Wednesday, September 10th, from 10:00 to noon at the Peter Wright Public Library. I understand that not everybody can make it during the daytime, but I am available over email or reach out, and we can schedule a separate meeting. But I do plan to kind of go through the budget if there are people that are in attendance and have some questions. So see you then. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned at 6:29 PM.